I would like, whoops, I would like to thank you. I'd like to thank you all for joining us this evening. We always, whoa. We always appreciate having our Boy Scouts in the audience and our citizens and some of our business owners that will be recognized tonight. So, welcome to the City of Meridian's City Council Regular Meeting. For the record, it is April 16th. It's four minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Mylum?
Here.
Commissioner Burnt?
Here.
Commissioner Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Fellow councilmembers, and absent are councilmembers Cavanagh and Borton and Mayor DeVeere.
I am here.
Thank you.
Item two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Troy Drake with Calvary Church here in Meridian. I ask you to join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you, Pastor Troy.
Counsel, would you guys join me in prayer? Well, Lord, thank you so much for creating this world and, Lord, that you've given us life and, God, that we have this free country that's so awesome. We're just grateful for the country, the freedom that we have to pursue, you know, where we want to live and work and we just appreciate that so much. God, I'm thankful for the city and what you've done here through our mayor and the city leaders and it's just a real blessing. And so, I pray that you would help us to remember how good we have it. And, Lord, as we head into Easter, we're just so thankful that you sent your Son here for us and that we might put our trust in Him to have eternal life. And we appreciate so much what you've done there, God. And, Lord, you know, and just praying for the safety of our community here tonight and all those first responders, the people who, you know, go into harm's way to protect us and help us when we need it. And I just pray, God, that they would have what they need and that it would be a safe community here. And lastly, God, I just would pray for the, all the decisions being made here tonight and that you give the city council wisdom or to thank you that we can elect those who represent us. Another great benefit of living in a free country. And so, I just pray that you bless these men and women, Lord, for their investment in our community and that you'd just give them and show them a lot of grace. And so, God, we just want to thank you again in Jesus' name. Amen. I'll bless you guys. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Pastor Troy. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
Items nine C, nine D, and nine E. The applicant has asked for a continuance to June 18th. I believe there are some members of the public here that wanted to speak on that matter and I was wondering if we should move that up, beginning of the agenda.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So, I move that we move that to seven before eight, one, no, that would be nine. How do we do that? Still an action item.
We can move it. If you're, Mr. Nary, correct me if I'm wrong, if the council's just going to continue it, they can consider it under item seven?
Yes.
Okay. Move that to item seven and with that, I move that we approve the agenda.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, anything under item five?
Madam Mayor, there are no signups.
Thank you. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
Move that we approve the consent agenda or the mayor deciding, the clerk.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All ayes must carried. Items nine C, D, and E were moved under seven. This is a public hearing continued from February 21st for H 2018-0117, H 2018-0118, and H 2018-0119. These three items were requested by the applicant's representative to continue based on they still are contemplating and exploring options about the properties if they want to change what has been previously approved or not. So, at this time, we don't really have a representative here or anything to present to understand what the applicant is thinking. Stephanie, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant has communicated with me that they'd like a little bit more time to communicate with their, who they're representing to discuss further options for the properties. Originally, the concept plan that was approved with the DA that currently resides over the properties shows multifamily in these, in the two areas that are, that were supposed to be heard tonight. And they're trying to determine whether they'd like to rezone and submit the preliminary plat and continue on with the development agreement modification as they had originally thought that they were going to. So, they would like a little bit more time to discuss that with them and determine whether that's appropriate or not.
Thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Clerk, Chris, did we renotice this and have them re-sign the property for this date?
Looking into that right now, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Stephanie at this time?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we did decide the last time that they requested continuance to have them renotice the site and I believe the clerk probably renoticed. I think they'd requested continuance before the 10-day deadline to post the site, though.
Okay. I would like to see, is there any members of the public that were here to listen to this application? If you'll raise your hand. Thank you for that. We apologize for the inconvenience. At this point, having a public hearing without understanding what we're actually hearing is really difficult. What counsel can instruct in their motion to continue is that the property be re-signed with the appropriate date and that the neighbors be renoticed as well. So, counsel, what is your desire on this?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer?
I move we continue item seven, A, B, and C to June 18th, 2019, and require that the applicant re-sign the property and pay for the renoticing requirements.
Second. I have a motion in a second to continue items H 2018-0117, 0118, and 0119 to June 18th, 2019 with the instruction to re-sign and renotice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes must carried. Thank you. And again, we apologize for the inconvenience this evening. Okay, item eight A is a community presentation. We have our Public Works team here that have some Environmental Excellence Awards and Jason?
You want to re-call first or if you want me to do that? All right, hello. Marie?
I just wanted to say hi.
Okay. So, Meridians Environmental Excellence Awards are a way to recognize businesses, organizations, and individuals in our community for their innovations, commitment, and leadership and environmental stewardship and environmental sustainability. Our award selection committee has chosen two worthy recipients for this year's awards out of the multiple nominees that were submitted from the community at large. Now, our first awardee, with about 650,000 guests each year, Roaring Springs Water Park and Wahoo's Fund Center is an energy-intensive operation. They began looking for ways to conserve energy about 10 years ago when Idaho Power approached them for an energy audit. Through the help of Idaho Power's Energy Efficiency Program, they were able to identify and implement energy efficiency projects throughout the park. Through installing VFDs, upgrading motors, pumps, and lightings, Roaring Springs have saved more than 1 million kilowatt-hours of energy. That's enough power to power about 70 homes for an entire year. Roaring Springs have been terrific ambassadors of energy efficiency and highlight the opportunities available to businesses and industry through partnering with Idaho Power's Energy Efficiency Program. We are happy to present the 2019 Meridian Environmental Excellence Award to Pat Morandi and Roaring Springs, Wahoo's.
And I would just add my congratulations and appreciation for your stewardship in our community. This award is presented to Roaring Springs, Wahoo's for commitment and investment in energy efficiency and conservation through implementation of energy efficiency measures at their Meridian facility. We appreciate everything you do. You're such a great corporate partner in our community and a good steward as well. Thank you so much.
After receiving a teaching degree from the University of Idaho, our next nominee moved to the Treasure Valley in 1990 where she began a career as an environmental education practitioner over the next 25-plus years, beginning with the Idaho Fish and Game and leading to several roles within the University of Idaho and the Idaho Water Resources Research Institute as Outreach and Education Manager. Her position including serving as Idaho's Coordinator for Project Wet, which is the Water Education for Teachers, which she has done for over 20 years. Through Project Wet and other water education outreach, Julie has impacted thousands of teachers and through them, many more students. She has served on the Board of IDEEA, the Idaho Environmental Education Association, for 20 years, including several years as president. And among other projects, she helped spearhead Idaho's environmental literacy planning efforts. She assisted the City of Meridian in developing our initial environmental education efforts, including planning for our interpretive center displays and assisting in training and outreach opportunities for floodplain managers. We are proud to have Julie Scanlon as a resident of Meridian and recipient of the 2019 Meridian
Julie, we appreciate your involvement and in the community in which you reside and we greatly appreciate being able to tap into your expertise in sharing the knowledge in our community. This Environmental Excellence Award is presented to you for leadership in environmental education, enhancing knowledge and connections to our natural world for teachers and students across Idaho and beyond. Thank you again for everything that you're doing in our community.
Thank you. I do have, I do have one thing I want to say. I got to work with a lot of teachers, hundreds of teachers, Meridian teachers, Idaho teachers, thousands maybe. And I had the luck in my job that I've always also got to work with water resource professionals, including people from your Public Works Department over the years. But the one most memorable opportunity I had in Meridian was in 2004, which was sort of an interesting year for you too. I believe you started as mayor in that year. We were doing a Water Awareness Week Festival with Meridian Middle School. I don't know if you remember this. We basically came in, had a bunch of activities. The students had little workbooks that they'd gone through. They were learning about general water things, about groundwater. They did a hands-on activity where they had to solve a mystery. And as we culminated the day, Tammy took time out of her, I'm sure, absolutely crazy schedule, you're less than half a year into it, to come in and spend time with those students and talk about water and how important it was and civic responsibility and interactions. And it was monumental for us. I, those students are now about 30 years old. I know. Well, I've been retired for three years, although I'm not very good at it. I don't know what those students took out at that time from that event. We hope they took some knowledge they're still using. But I do know what our staff, there was seven or eight of us that worked for different water entities that helped to present this to the, to Meridian Middle School. When we came out, we were all impressed. And I guess the basic thing that we knew was that Meridian was in good hands and we were very pleased that she took the time out to come out, respect the education the kids were getting, the effort that we were putting into it, and just celebrate the day with us. And it made a huge mark. And we've continued to have that kind of a working relationship throughout my endeavors with City of Meridian. So, thank you for the community you are. I'm proud to be a Meridian resident. And I actually brought you, in case you've forgotten, I have a little picture from the event. It sounded very good because it was like a 2004 Brownie Star Flash or something. But there you go. So, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item eight B is under our Department of Environmental Quality Update on Drinking Water Regulations. And Dennis, are you going to be introducing this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time tonight. As you may know, Meridian's drinking water standards are set forth by the EPA under the Safe Drinking Water Standards and are enforced by Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. Tonight, we'd like to take some time to make you aware of some recent changes to our drinking water reporting process around these standards and how they will affect not only the city but other water systems across the strait in managing certain minerals and constituents found in our water sources. Although we do not see a concern at this time with our sources, we want to take this opportunity to welcome Jerry Henry, Drinking Water Program Manager, and Brandon Louder, Drinking Water Compliance Officer from DEQ, to introduce these new requirements so you can better understand them and how they will affect us going forward. And of course, at the end, we will stand for questions. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Jerry Henry.
Thank you. Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Just real quick, brief overview, DEQ, in case you haven't worked with this before, we have six regional offices and then the state office. I work in the state office. Brandon works at the regional office here in Boise, so he oversees like the Suez's, the Meridians, Nampa's, things like that. So, just real quick, I'm going to discuss with you, I did not do a PowerPoint because I personally hate death by PowerPoint, so I'm going to be more of a discussion. We're going to give you kind of a, just a really high-level overview of the standards. So, you're probably familiar with the primary drinking water standards and those are your usual suspects, like your arsenic, your nitrate, and the bacteria and things like that. And then, there's also non-enforceable standards. Those are called secondary standards. Manganese is a secondary standard. And EPA establishes those. Again, those are non-enforceable. They also establish health advisories. And these are things that, where they believe they're informal technical guidance, so they're supposed to inform us and how to help when there are situations. And there is a 2004 health advisory for manganese. Now, understand historically, these health advisories kind of went largely unnoticed, but we are also operating in a new era post-Flint. Thank you, 2016. And so, this is important context to understand why some of the decisions that we're making is impactful. So, with respect to manganese, there is a short-term health advisory with respect to formula-fed infants, and it's at .3 milligrams per liter. Why that's important is because for formula, there's manganese that's already in formula. So, when you add water that already has manganese in it, then it, that increases the potential health effects, which are neurological. And manganese crosses the blood-brain barrier and can affect children maybe years later. So, there's lifetime exposures, but the important thing that we're talking about here is your 10-day exposure. And for adults and older children, it is 1 milligram per liter. We really don't see a lot of that in the state. We have some, and I know some systems are kind of coming right up against a .3. And so, that's why we're here to talk to you today. And so, what brought this to the forefront is the, what's called the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule. And this is, it sounds ridiculous, unregulated contaminant monitoring rule. So, this is something that's implemented by EPA. The states don't actually implement this rule. And it's part of a process to determine what contaminants are going to be regulated in the future. So, it's a way for them to determine occurrence data. Manganese is on the list, as well as some cyanotoxins, and that's important too in this context that I'll share a little bit. So, what happened is that, again, post-Flint, but a lot of the water systems in the state are larger systems, the ones that are 10,000 and over are required to monitor under this unregulated contaminant monitoring rule and some of the smaller systems. So, this is nationwide. City of Meridian, the Suez's, again, the large systems are required to monitor. And what's also important to know is that EPA pays for and does the monitoring for the smaller systems, and this will be important in a minute, but the larger systems like Meridian and those folks do the monitoring on their own and those are, get reported directly to DEQ. The others get reported directly to EPA. Well, on around August 8th of last year, we received notification from EPA that their headquarters has developed what I lovingly refer to as the flaming telegram. So, I got an email from all of the Region 10 states, from the EPA Region 10, stating basically that if, if a system exceeds, and they were talking particularly about the small systems, but really if any system exceeds the .3 or the .1, but let's just talk about the .3 for now, that in this notification, which is going to go from headquarters, because they're the ones that are going to get the results for the small systems, that will then go to the region, which will then come to DEQ, which will then, we need to identify and contact the water system. Do you see a problem with that process? So, in this notification, they're telling us this recent, this system took a recent sample and it's over this level. The concerning part for me is therefore, near-term actions to address public health concerns, particularly for formula-fed infants, may be warranted. What do I do with that? This is an unregulated contaminant. We have not been down this road before. We are in, again, the post-Flint era. About that same time last summer, and Brandon can probably speak to it better than I can, he was involved in the harmful algal bloom event locally. But there's also short-term health advisories for a couple of cyanotoxins, and I don't know if you followed the news for the Salem, Oregon event, when they actually had it in their drinking water. Well, to shorten up the version, they couldn't drink the water, but the test results came in and they waited because their protocols were, again, this is unregulated, their protocols were, well, let's verify with what we have. And I don't remember the timeframe in there that they waited. But then they got the results back. Well, the public was furious that they waited to tell them. So, the information that drinking water administrators or managers like myself are taking away from this is tell people what you know when you know it. So, here we are now with yet another unregulated contaminant, with yet another short-term advisory. What do we do when we get this notification? So, I went through, the only rule that we have to avail ourselves to is the Tier One Public Notification Rule, and that is something that we also adopt. And Tier One means it has to be done within 24 hours of notification. And really, what that is, is it's for other violations or situations with significant potential to have serious adverse effects on human health from short-term exposures. So, it's as determined by us on a case-by-case basis or in our rules. Well, we don't have that on our rules, but on a case-by-case basis, we worked with our attorneys and we're like, well, this is, this is what we've got. So, we quickly sent out a directive to folks and developed a letter that went out to all of the systems that were, we have about 30 systems in the state that are monitoring under this unregulated contaminant monitoring rule to let them know. And we also made personal phone calls to let them know this was occurring because we don't really necessarily know what these levels are because they're not required to be reported. Our labs in Idaho are required to report to us directly. So, if we get results from Meridian or Suez or Nampa or anywhere else in the state, then they're required to report to us. So, that's where we are with it. If we get a result that's over the .3 and technically .349, if you want to go into that, but if we get a level over that, that we will require a public notification. And we worked with the Division of Health to develop a template for public notification that advises for infants not to use this water, not to consume water that's over this level, to use an alternative source. But it's, again, one of those fine lines that you're trying to, you try not to scare people because then they're going to want to know, well, is it not safe for me? Well, it's fine for, you know, adults. And so, it's a new environment that we're in and a situation that we haven't been in before, so we're kind of trying to feel our way through it. But that is the only requirement that we have the ability to use.
Well, I guess my, I know you've sat down with our staff.
Yes.
And they made you aware, if we get any kind of result like that, that well is instantly shut off and new well supplanted, so they get different water. To be giving notices that the water... To be giving notices that the water they're drinking is, has tested at a certain level, the water they will be drinking at that moment will not be the water that you're talking about. So in your template, do you explain that? I mean, it's, a template is, is across the board, and it's, this is not a one-size-fits-all type of a thing. I understand on the smaller system, they don't have that option to, to switch over to a different well.
Correct.
So how would you notice in our particular situation if, on the slim chance that it would ever happen, how would you do that?
Right. Well, so let me address a couple of the questions that I heard. So one of the question was, or the situation was, you're noticing for something that has changed. Public notification is a little bit like that. You're, you're actually noticing for something that you took a sample for how many days before. That's, that's actually kind of designed that way. So the notification can be altered to notify, or basically there's a section in the notification template to say, you know, this, this water no longer is, but, you know, please be aware that this is what occurred. We just have to approve it if you're going to modify it, but you can definitely tell them that, you know, that, that well has been turned off. You know, we've recognized what the situation was, and we turned it off. This is not uncommon. We've, we've had that situation with nitrate and arsenic and things like that, so. But the architecture for what we're familiar with is that, is using a template so that people can get it out quickly, but there is a section in the template where you can identify what's been done about it. So, there was another question in there, but I'm not sure if I'm...
I think the question is more, can you modify that template of how you would notice and, and work with our communications team in advance?
And Brandon, you're welcome to come up. So Brandon deals directly and supervises the systems directly, but we've done this a number of times, oh, sorry.
This is...
We've done this a number of times.
If you'll state your name, Brandon.
Right. Where they do modify the template so that it's specific to the situation. Just, the important part is, is the people need to know what's happened. It's kind of under the community right-to-know component, but then we don't want to scare them, but yes, if you want to speak to that.
Completely understand.
Yeah, so, yeah, we work with systems. There's, there's standard language about the health effects, and so even though that well may be turned off, people have been exposed to it. And so they may be seeing health effects as a result of what they've consumed. So it's more of a just transparency and letting them know what's happened. But we're all for modifying that language, as long as it fits the situation, and as long as that health effects language is out there. But yeah, we want to clearly inform people what's happened so that they can make prudent decisions about seeing a doctor and what they're going to do about their health.
And just a question, since this, I can't remember what you called your, your memo that said you needed to do a Tier 1.
A flaming telegram.
Flaming memo. So you haven't apparently had any incidents since you had this flaming memo to even know how you would deal with it?
We've had one.
And so how did you deal with it? I don't recall seeing anything.
No, it was interesting, and it actually fits into the scenario that you're describing, where the well was turned off, and the same question came up about whether or not notification was really required because that well had been shut down. And the response from DEQ to the system was, yes, it is still required for the same reasons. People have been drinking it. We don't know if it's been over this level for 10 days or not, so we're going to assume that it has. The water system chose not to issue the notification. There was a bit of confusion between the system and DEQ, and they felt that they weren't clearly informed, so they chose not to issue that notification. And so they essentially received a violation and, and dealt with that aftermath.
Part of what happened with, Madam Mayor, sorry for interrupting, part of what happened with that situation is we were trying to catch up with a directive. The directive went out. EPA's tables do not actually include the .3. So when this system went to look, because of course, they were like, I don't know what you're talking about, they went to look for it, and it's not there. And I've contacted EPA, and they said, yes, it's an error that they did not include it in the tables. They have yet to fix it. It is actually in the health advisory, in like the second page at the bottom. But part of that was the confusion within us trying to get ahead of something, and they got caught in the middle of it. But what I've heard consistently by, you know, working with the Water Utility Council, the Drinking Water Advisory Committee, is that people want certainty. So the only certainty I can actually provide is that, okay, we're going to require notification. We can't require treatment, we can't require things like that, but we can require the notification component.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So what are the symptoms, and is growing a large head one of them? I have a one-year-old grandson who just got off formula.
Oh.
He has a kind of a large head. I'm just kidding about that part, but I am curious about this.
Oh, my gosh. Well, did you have a question?
Question was serious, the comment after was not. What, what the symptoms are for the consumption.
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, is it Mylum or Mylum? Yes. So actually, the trouble with manganese is sometimes the symptoms and the issues don't show up for years. But it's problems with learning and ability, you know, walking, different things with your brain and neurological features, so it may not show up for quite some time. And that's part of the trouble with a contaminant like this.
Wow. I don't have anything nice to say. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Not a question, just, I, thanks for coming and helping us understand that, especially, I think the mayor had a great question, knowing now especially that we can alter the language to be able to explain that as we're making the notice that this has been rectified, not just simply putting it out there.
Right.
You know, allowing people to believe that, should this happen, within the highly unlikely scenario that it does, that the message will be clear as to the reality of the situation, as opposed to trying to confuse them that it's a continuing issue that they're experiencing, but that it happened and it's been solved. Hopefully, it never does happen, and given our track record, it doesn't look like it probably ever will, but definitely appreciate the information and the guidance and how to move forward with planning for it.
Thank you.
I guess in the health risks, I mean, it's concerning to think that, how often is this unregulated test required?
So this is the fourth, Madam Mayor, this is the fourth round of the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, so they do it every, like, three to four years, four to five years. I'm trying to remember the interval for those. And they pick, they select different contaminants on the list. This list contains a few of the contaminants that have short-term health advisories, and there are like cyanotoxins, but cyanotoxin's a little easier cell, because you tell people there's toxin in your water, that's an easier cell than manganese. But that's part of the trouble that we're in, in a situation where there's a health advisory, but there's no regulatory level that we can enforce. And EPA has highlighted to us that they will be doing more short-term advisories. So this is kind of a new era that we're in. Trying to provide, definitely trying to provide some sort of consistency, because we've got great systems like Meridian and folks that, that really want to do the right thing, and we're trying to provide the structure for which they can do the right thing, but then we also have systems that are going to do. So then that leaves us in, okay, well, if we know that there's health effects, then we should notice for them if they don't do it. And so it's kind of in a very awkward situation.
I'm sure.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I can add, there, in addition to just the required monitoring as part of the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, manganese, although it may not necessarily be this high in most systems in this area, there is manganese in a lot of systems in this area, and so they do voluntary monitoring. A lot of sources have treatment for manganese. A lot of systems just monitor voluntarily because they want to keep an eye on it so that they can manage it. So even though it is a voluntary sample, if that result comes to DEQ, it's treated the same way.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good distinction.
And, and I know, we, we test for, for all kinds of constituents, because, you know, our, our team is very proud of the water that they deliver. They want to ensure that what we're doing is in the best interests of our citizens. I, I just, I understand your requirements to, to notice, and, and I think it's, it's important to do so. It's just in how you do it, and how we can work with you in, in helping to deliver that message, if it should ever occur, because we don't think it will, but these are natural constituents in our aquifer.
Yes. And Madam Mayor, if I can add, I have worked with the Division of Health, Dr. Adams, and they have an ability to notify through a system that they have, all the pediatricians, so should the event occur, we can send notifications to pediatricians to update them as well.
As long as we have a good education campaign that goes along with that notification so that there's not instant chaos and, and concern that it's, it's, there's information out there that accompanies any kind of notification on how to, to maybe give some peace of mind, but also where they can go for more information.
Right. And Madam Mayor, we do...
Because I can Google anything and really freak out.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I don't recommend you Google manganese.
Okay, I won't. I actually already have.
You already have, right. It's a prion-like disease, it's, right, there's a lot of information you can't...
It's really nice. That's why I think it's important to also have good education.
Right. And we do have information on our website, and apparently Division of Health said that they would get information on theirs.
Okay. Any further questions from council? We appreciate you coming and sharing the information, and we promise not to kill the messengers. Thank you for that, and thank you for meeting with our, our team and, and making sure that this is, this is a team effort, this is a joint effort, and
Yes.
we are just as concerned about your agency as our agency in, in what, what quality of water we deliver. That is important.
Absolutely.
I agree.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis, or Lorelei, anything you want to add? I don't see any, but thank you. Okay, item 9A, under Action Items, we have our Parks and Recreation Department, and Mike is here with us this evening. We always like to read net zero budget amendment.
Yep, we made that crystal clear. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, our community garden operators applied for a $979 grant from the Idaho Botanical Garden, and they received the grant, and the city has deposited that in our, we got the check and put it in our revenue account, so we would like it moved over to our operating budget so we can help them purchase plants. And we're asking for your approval of the budget amendment.
Thank you, Mike. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve the zero, net zero budget amendment for community garden plants.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 9B is under Police Department, and I see Chief Levy making his way up to the microphone.
Madam Mayor, council, thanks for the time. This isn't a net zero exact, but it's, it's real close. We're here to ask for a budget amendment to purchase a Truenarc narcotic analyzer, and this device is $26,902, and it's an awful lot of money. But the main reason why we need it is because of fentanyl. And you'll hear fentanyl a lot in the, the news, and fentanyl in small doses can be lethal, or at least overdosing to anybody that's not used to being exposed to it. This device will allow us to test for unknown substances like fentanyl without having to open the package. And so it's the only device out there that can currently do this, and my guess is that's why they asked for the high price. But why we're here today is that we have obtained a grant from the Office of Drug Policy in amount of $20,000. And to make up the difference, to make this truly a net zero, is we're using drug seizure funds to make up the difference. So it's not any city dollars that's going toward this purchase. So I ask for your approval and to not exceed $26,902 to purchase the Truenarc analyzer.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Worth every penny. I move that we approve the budget amendment for the analyzer and the drug kits for an amount not to exceed $26,902.
Have a motion in a second to approve item 9B. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Kendall, for being here. Items C, D, and E were already heard under item 7, so we'll move to 9F, which is a public hearing for the proposed city clerk's office fees. This is Resolution 19-2137. I will open this public hearing. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it okay to address you from here?
Yes.
Okay. On March 26th, City Clerk CJ Coles came and spoke with you about the need to amend fees, to have a license process for the, the booting that goes along with the booting ordinance, so we needed to amend the fees to assign those fees. I'm stumbling, I apologize. But we agreed on $73.50 for those fees, because they fall in line with our mobile sales unit. We've had no one sign in to testify and receive no testimony, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Council, any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item? If there is no further comment from Mr. Clerk or questions from council, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move we close the public hearing on item 19-2137. Second.
Have a motion in a second to close the public hearing on 9F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Do I have a motion on the resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I move that we approve Resolution 19-2137.
Have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 19-2137. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 10A is Ordinance 19-1823. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this ordinance by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance number 19-1823, an ordinance H2018-0043, keeps subdivision for annexation of a parcel of land, being a portion of the northeast one-quarter of Section 5, Township 2 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian, as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 7.07 acres of land from RUT to R8, medium-density residential, and 53.47 acres of land from RUT to R2, low-density residential, zoning districts in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read. Is there any questions from council? If not, I would entertain a motion to... If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1823, suspension of rules. Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve item 10A. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 10B is the second reading for Ordinance 19-1822. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Second reading of Ordinance number 19-1822, an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 7, Section 5, Paragraph A 2 of the Meridian City Code, regarding days and time of the city council work sessions and regular meetings, and providing an effective date.
This ordinance will be put on next week's agenda for the third and final reading. If anyone would like further information on this, it is available online, or we can ask Mr. Clerk to read it in its entirety. I don't see anyone jumping up and down to, to hear that. We'll go ahead and put this on next week's agenda. Council, anything under item 11 for future meeting topics? I would like to remind you that Wednesday, tomorrow, is Well 22 Open House from 4:30 to 6:30 at Bear Creek Park Treatment Facility. That's, I think we all know where that is. We would love to see you out there. And there is an Easter egg hunt out at Kleiner Park at 10:30 on Saturday, Capitol Community Easter egg hunt. This is something that is well-attended every single year, like thousands. And our Main Street Market kicked off this last weekend with good attendance, and so that runs from 9 to 2 every Saturday, from now until, I think, the end of September. That's all I had. If there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
You guys picked a good night, or you got lucky.